Guys, all set? Okay, uh, I'm gonna call the meeting in order for the... Call the, uh, September 8th, 2005, Leachville Slade Board Meeting in order. First item is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we gonna set the agenda? Is anybody about to add or change on the agenda? Have most accepted as written?
I'll make motion.
Most made?
Seconded.
Most made seconded, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, close? Uh, on the back, up there, there's a sheet, I think everybody's been here, that tells how the meeting's run if anybody's... Want to look at it? Is there any, uh, slideboard announcements?
No.
Any, uh, public announcements? Any commission committees, trustees, branch of service reports, other announcements?
Uh, yes, sir, just from the planning commission side, just wanted to let the community know that, uh, the town plan surveys are going out right now, so we wanna get input from folks as far as what they're concerned on. The survey will develop, kinda be the basis for us to develop, um, a vision and goals and strategy for the next eight years for the town, so, uh, we're gonna have some drop boxes at the town office, the, uh, library, and both of the schools. And there's QR codes on there if people wanna print off other, you know, other copies and whatnot, but anyway, you'll be seeing that, uh, coming around now, it's important. They'll be open through October, I guess, uh, we'll be, uh, taking, taking things through October and, um, just looking for as much input from the town as we can, uh, help with it.
So Eli called me today, she's gonna have them all stuffed and hopefully back at the office on Wednesday to run through the meter. So they'll go out Wednesday, Thursday this week.
Okay, perfect, great, thank you, Jackie.
Each one of the slideboard members gotta get a copy of it?
Yep, yep.
Good.
You'll also get one in the mail.
Okay.
I'll get one in the mail closer than, yeah.
Any other announcements? Next item is approve the warrants, SB 22160, 161, 162, and 163. Got a motion on that?
Make the motion to approve as ready. Seconded that.
Most made seconded, any discussion?
I'm just gonna abstain from 22161. It's got fire department.
No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close? Next item is payroll warrants, 824 and 97, have a motion on that?
Tyler and Cody have to abstain from 824.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve both as ready.
Seconded? Motion made seconded, any discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close? Next item is, uh, slideboard meeting minutes of 8:11. Have a motion on that?
Accept as written.
Seconded?
Aye.
Most made seconded, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close? Town manager report, Jackie?
Delinquent taxes as of today are a hundred and six thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Water's at ten thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and four cents. Sewer's at eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents. Guardrails are still pending on Fallsborough and Baptist Street. The paving grant through the state, uh, no one has actually received one yet, that's why we haven't heard anything. Same with the structures grant, they haven't issued any paving or structures grants this year. We don't know if they're going to, uh, but if they do, it's obviously, it's gonna go into next spring, early summer. The intersection of Route 14 and Business Center Road will be paved on September 10th. The road crew is tearing it up tomorrow, and then RG Paving will be paving it, so all of those wonderful potholes down there will be felt. Currently, we are at forty-five hundred yards of sand that have been put up so far, there's stockpiled down near roughly, three thousand, waiting to be hauled back. The Snowbridge Road drainage project was completed. Flint and Pleasant Street drainage projects are going to start, Flint Road will start on September 15th. I mean, I'm sorry, Pleasant Street will start on September 15th, and Flint Road will start roughly around September 22nd. And there's three projects up there. The FEMA buyout on Meadow Street.
Ebert Road, don't forget?
Hmm?
Ebert Road.
Oh, and Ebert Road, yes. Is in there between, I think that one was gonna be roughly 917.
Yeah, that was the last one.
FEMA buyout on Meadow Street, the update is all the title work has been done for the closing. All the paperwork has been resubmitted by the FEMA attorney back to the state for their final review. I should have a closing date within the next two weeks. Once the closing has been done, then the asbestos bid testing will go out, and that'll be, um, reviewed for the house, the, the mobile home is above the, the threshold for age, uh, so there's no asbestos in that, so, once that's completed, and if they find it, then that has to be removed, and the bids for the contractors for demolition of the mobile home and the house will be, um, sent out and, um, for bids and approved. And then hopefully, um, this fall, it'll all be down, and it'll, um, be turned into a green, be seeded in, and be a green space. So, that's where we stand with that right now, but we're, we're waiting for the state to review the, the final paperwork.
Are they, um, are they gonna do like a berm along, along the creekside there, or just?
Um, they, it has to be, um, in case the water comes up, they can't really put anything specific in it. They might be able to put some rocks, you know, some big boulders or something to make it like a, a barrier for, um, so people aren't, you know, falling in, but they can't, they can't put like a berm because the water's gonna be able to flow through it in case it ever does come up again. Let's see. We're working on the Right of Way Eastmans for Rear, Weir Road and Old Town Road. I'll hear back from the landowner tomorrow on whether they're going to approve us moving the turnaround, um, up there onto their property. And I've already talked to the owner of Old Town Road, and he's, they've agreed to it, and that Eastman's all drafted. He's just gonna, he and his wife have just gotta sign it and get it recorded, so we'll have a DVD Eastman for Old Town Road. All the streetlights, um, the, down at the other end of town have been, all the lights have been, light bulbs have been changed, and the poles between Business Center and Economy have been repaired because the wires got cut under the bridge during the flood of 2023, so all of that's been repaired, so all the lights are back on down there. Roadside mower is still out for another couple of weeks. The grader, we had a little hiccup, um, it broke down, they ordered the part, it should be here Wednesday or Thursday, and then that'll be, that'll be back up and running.
Coming back to those, uh, turnaround areas, I think we should have a brief executive session, just to discuss negotiation issues with them.
Okay.
Somebody go to that?
Aye.
We want to have a brief executive session.
We've got some negotiation issues on these turnaround areas, I think.
Okay.
Should we, should talk about a little bit in executive session? Make sure everybody's on board with it. Anybody have any questions or, Jackie?
Um, I just gotta mention, South Hill looks excellent, the berms are gone, we traveled up and checked them out, that's good. Did work on that, I know it's on that, but, give me, Minard Crossroad, that is terrible. I drove through it the other day, yesterday, and I was like, wow.
Uh, Graham Road is too.
I, I haven't been up that far.
Flint Road worse.
Okay, I'm just putting, throwing it out there, that was it.
It's my driveway way you're going through. It's so dry, you just can't keep nothing.
We drove up your driveway looking for fireworks last night.
Just, there's no moisture in the ground, the stuff just...
Oh, it wasn't dust, it was just the problems. It's all, all the combination, everything just turned up, I know, I, I get it, I get it.
Any hills at all is terrible.
Yep.
We bet you it rains, and we bet you it's too dry.
Well, we're not gonna complain about any rain.
Okay, anyway.
Anybody else say anything?
Yep, that's next.
Okay, we're going on to new business, uh, Search for Regional Plan Commission Act 181 Land Use Maps Presentation.
There's more copies of these back there if you want. Step next to the sign and sheet, Jackie.
Thanks all for, for making time for us tonight to hear about this. Uh, my name's Brian Boyd, I'm a senior planner and program manager at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. My colleague Nikki is gonna kick us off with, uh, an overview of Act 181.
Hi, um, I'm Nikki Saban, I'm a planner with Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. We're here to give you an overview of the Act 181 legislation, which, um, updated Act 250, uh, to create a tiered framework for location-based land use jurisdiction. Act 181 requires RPCs, that's us, to develop future land use maps as part of the regional planning process. Uh, Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, we're currently working on a draft future land use map and updates to the regional plan. We anticipate submitting the regional plan and future land use map in early 2026. So, there's a tiered framework that I'll just briefly go over, um, it's divided into three tiers, so tier one is, uh, composed, I think this is more for areas that have capacity for growth and more Act 250 exemptions. Tier two, the jurisdictional threshold remains the same, um, and is the status quo, I think that's what Williamstown would probably be under. This, and then tier three will have additional jurisdiction for critical natural resource areas. Um, this tier is not based on regional maps, um, and will be developed by the Agency of Natural Resources. Process considerations that we're, we're thinking about as we do the map, um, so municipalities, uh, must demonstrate administrative capacity, um, to implement local regulations, so that's if they would want to go into tier one. Downtown and village centers, planned growth areas and village areas, um, these are the areas that should accommodate a substantial portion of the housing growth in the region. A little bit about the statewide intent of the mapping methodology. It's to provide a consistent statewide delineation of the future land use map areas, um, so areas of growth are mapped at the local scale. BAFTA, which is the Vermont...
Association of Planning and Development Agencies.
Yes, they recommend defining core areas first, so really, um, sequencing the map development from the inside out. A little bit about the process in detail, uh, future land use areas are created as part of the regional planning process in correlation with member municipalities. The areas are broken down into three sections, so it is in your handout, but I'm, I'll just go over a brief overview, and then Brian can also clarify some of the details. So the first section is high-density growth areas, that would be your centers and neighborhoods. That's planned growth areas, village areas, high density. Turning to, the second section is something that might interest, um, Williamstown, which is really the low to moderate density growth areas. This would be transition infill areas, um, areas of existing or planned commercial office, mixed-use residential development. They're generally adjacent to neighborhoods, um, or they can be standalone if they're served by water or wastewater or both. Resource-based recreation areas, these are large-scale recreation facilities, you know, like concentrated nail, rail, trail networks, and also lake shores, ski resorts, things like that. Enterprise areas may, are mainly locations of high economic activity and employment, and they're not typically adjacent to planned growth areas, um, such as natural resource extraction and industrial areas. And then finally, hamlets, these are generally areas that don't meet the village center criteria, or at least yet, and they're not really planned for significant growth at the time. Then finally, rural areas, which is category three, um, it's divided into three areas, so rural general allows for low-density residential and some commercial development, um, provided it's compatible with productive lands and natural areas. Then there's rural ag and forestry, this is considered carefully managed development, which promotes the working landscape and rural economy. And then finally, rural conservation are areas of significant natural resources identified by the RPCs or municipalities based upon the Agency of Natural Resource mapping. So, I'll pause here because it's a lot of overview, but if, um, you have any initial questions, we could answer those first.
Don't have any questions, I just have a comment, like, I've seen some of the Agency of Natural Resources mapping with wetlands and different things like that, it's pretty broad brush. I mean, it covers a lot of territory where there's no wetlands or anything involved in it, but I mean, it's like, so you gotta be careful what you're doing to get more specific with it, there's a lot, there's a lot of areas, you can find areas you shouldn't be into, but there's a lot of areas you could work with that you just got that whatever color swipe of grass that they use, so, I just, that's the thing I've seen in the past. And I heard that, uh, our planning commission works around that, not to give up some valuable land that could be used for whatever, just because it happens to have that broad brush approach to it, check into it a little farther and make sure, you know.
Yes, I think you're, you're, what you're talking about is, uh, most directly relevant to the tier three designation, and that is, um, a designation that's set by the Land Use Review Board and the Agency of Natural Resources. There's still in the rulemaking process for that, so we, we don't have a, a totally clear picture on what that might look like. But it is really important to note that if some land within the municipality falls under that tier three designation, that that doesn't mean development can't happen there. There's nothing about this process that says you can't develop there unless you're in floodplain, a few exclusions. But again, that's not based on this map, that's based on other information that, that's widely available, so, um, just like with the tier one, um, areas that, that Nikki mentioned before, the, the tier three designation may, again, it's like, they haven't drawn the map yet, but may cover some portions of the town, and in that, and in those portions of the town, um, the, the trigger for Act 250, uh, review would be lower than it currently is. The remaining areas of the town will fall into that tier two designation, and that's simply status quo. So, if it was regulated under Act 250 in the past, it'll be regulated under Act 250 moving forward. There's no change there for those, those tier two locations. You do have a designated village center, um, however, because there's not zoning in the town, and I'm not taking a position on this, I'm just telling you what the statute says, because there's not zoning in the town, you're not eligible to qualify for either a tier one A or a tier one B designation. If at some point in the future, the town did decide to adopt zoning, um, we could revisit the tier one B designation at that time. And essentially what that means is that, um, for up to fifty units of development on up to ten acres of land, uh, the Act 250 process would be waived, meaning that the local, uh, um, review board zoning administrator would essentially administer that permit, again, for up to fifty units on, on less than, than ten acres. You're not there yet, so I don't think it's worth anyone's time really to, to dwell on that, I've not heard, uh, a great expression of interest to adopt zoning. If at some point in the future, that's, uh, something the town's interested in, let's talk about it, um, at that time. But, the other thing I, I'll, I'll mention, I, I said this about tier three, but it's really relevant to the entire map. This map, this future land use map is not intended to either replace or serve as the zoning map for the town. So, essentially what we're trying to do is, um, designate these, uh, areas throughout town in a consistent framework that's gonna match what every other regional planning commission is doing for all of their, um, regions, and really to look at opportunities for new housing development, be that infill development or, um, or new development outside of already, uh, developed areas. But the map itself, once adopted by the, the board of commissioners at the Regional Planning Commission, does not tell you you have to do anything, or tell you you can't do something that the town wants to do.
I had a discussion with another slideboard member from a joint town, and he had a concern that they had like a wildlife corridor, it was always grass in the veins, where it's a big forest and all the way up through, all the way to interstate, it was really wide, I haven't seen it myself, but it was a really wide swath. And he was concerned with, you know, uh, restricting development too much and reducing land values because of that designation, and how it affect, you know, property taxes and stuff like that, and so, it was, I just, he thought it was way beyond what probably needed to be, so...
Yeah, so the, the intent with that tier three is for the state to take, uh, really to take a statewide look, not even, not even regional perspective, and identify these critical natural resource areas at the, at the state level, so, um, it's unlikely that your town forest would be included unless your town forest is directly adjacent to that wildlife corridor, just as an example, the, from my initial understanding, it does not seem as though they're going to be extremely aggressive in the designation of this tier three, but it is happening. There is a chance to comment on both the rulemaking process and the, the map, and we'd be happy to keep you up to date as to when that information becomes available so that you can provide, provide your feedback. I know that that's a concern that's shared by, by many rural, large, large lot, not necessarily only them, but, but large lot rural landowners. But again, my, my understanding at this point is that they're really looking for those sort of really critical areas, so wildlife corridors, you know, you know, in relation to your, uh, conversation with another select board member, are likely to be the types of things they're trying to identify, um, based on this assumption, like, what's the point protecting the habitat if they can't get from habitat to, to habitat area? The effects on local property, um, value, and the, the grand list, I, I think remain to be seen.
I know from experience that, uh, if you get involved with Act 250, it'll be well-reviewed. At every agency, you'll try to get all the kids.
That's one way for the positive spin on it.
If you can hold out long enough, you probably get through, but it's a, it's quite a process.
That's for sure, and that, you know, that's the idea behind these tier one, uh, opportunities, the tier one A and the tier one B, but again, for municipalities without zoning, um, and subdivision regulations, the state at this time is not making those, uh, one A, one B designations available. In case I didn't mention, your village center designation does remain, any potential benefits that you could achieve under that, um, village center designation will remain, um, it's just that you can't move it to the, to that quote-unquote next level, that tier one, uh, type designation where you could get, in a sense, relief from Act 250 oversight, but it certainly doesn't mean that, um, there's not local review, it doesn't mean, oh, we're tier one B, we can fill in wetlands, we can pave over rivers, we can do whatever we want, it just means that the review process happens locally, and at that point, once a decision is made, uh, the decision's made, it doesn't then pass on to the Act 250, uh, to the regional board.
Do they still have in this new bill, um, there used to be, if you built, if you subdivided more than ten lots, there used to be five lots, went by, I think it went up to ten, in a certain district, you automatically triggered Act 250, even if it was another town that's got this zoning, and, or does it fall back under the zoning part of it?
So, in Williamstown, the same thing, that same, uh, level of development that triggers Act 250 now, um, will persist after the, the regional future land use map for adjoining municipalities, uh, depending on whether they pursue a tier one A or tier one B designation, those triggers would, would change.
I'm more familiar with this than most of you, that's why I ask these questions.
Yeah, no, I'm welcome.
You guys are welcome to ask.
I was just gonna say, so it seems like for us, basically, nothing's changing.
For the most part, other than, um, if or more likely when the, the state designates the, the tier three piece, but at this, at this point, I, I don't have a boundary to suggest like this is gonna be the tier three in the back. So that would be the, that would be the one area that would change, and again, it's not because that means that development's not allowed, it just means that the Act 250 jurisdictional threshold, you know, basically the, the ten lots, uh, or ten acre development, whatever the, the number of housing units, is likely to be lower. But what that translates to is greater oversight in the permitting process, which then translates to, obviously, greater expense to the, the developer, but...
No, Montoya would never do that.
I know, I know, I think it was an accident this time.
When they, when they redraw that map, any chance we can sell Chittenden County to New York? Paint your brush thing there, New York.
I can certainly make you a map with an adjusted boundary, I don't think it's gonna carry any weight.
The thing that might apply is the road rule jurisdiction that, uh, for, uh, roads built in tier two designation, so, um, off of a main, is a artery road, if it's more than eight hundred feet, that's not allowed to, currently with the road rule. Have you heard of the road rule? Yeah, this is part of the Act 181 jurisdiction that's been passed, and I think it's up to two thousand feet, um, total, uh, road development, if you're in a, like, building off, like, into a neighborhood.
So it's, it's increasing the distance, or?
It's, it's decreasing.
Decreasing?
Yes, it's limiting to eight hundred feet.
From two thousand?
For, for a single house development off of a road.
I'm not a multi. Not...
Not, well, if you had multi, it'd be up to two thousand feet, total distance from the road. And I guess that's to reduce sprawl and, you know, scattered development.
Limit, limiting forest fragmentation is essentially the idea there, but again, that's another rule that is in development, so, um, while we know that it's coming eventually, we don't have all the specifics to, to talk with you about that as well, but it's good and wanted, that's likely to be, have more of an impact here than, um, probably even the tier three designation, I would guess.
So you couldn't have a driveway longer than eight hundred feet?
You would, you would have to go through an enhanced permitting process with the state, is my understanding of what they're gonna require.
On a single-family dwelling?
If, if the road exceeds eight hundred length, uh, eight hundred feet in length, yeah.
Road or driveway?
Either way.
But it's, but it's multiple, it could be multiple units too.
Two thousand feet for multiple units?
And the guidelines are still being set, so early two thousand...
Okay, so if I bought ten acres, I'd, I'd have to have my house built within eight hundred feet of the road instead of back away from people? Wow.
You know, the first house, eight hundred feet, did you build a second one?
No, no, I don't, I don't want the second one, the point is getting away from people.
So these, this, uh, Act 181, that's already law, law now?
Act 21, 181 has been passed, but there are still elements of the legislation that are working their way through the rulema- that are working their way through the rulemaking process. So the tier one A application, so that's, you know, going to be for Montpelier, for Burlington, places like that. The tier three piece that I mentioned, again, that's in January twenty twenty six is when they hope to have that rulemaking process complete. And then the the road rule for the tier two, the the status quo areas on a similar timeline, early next year for for completion.
So it seems like only towns with zoning are going to get any benefit, possibly. Everybody else like us just gets stricter.
It's to encourage housing development, that is why they've sent this.
Encourage, so.
I don't know, I feel like people moved to Williamstown, they literally call it the Wild West.
Our our town is not any worse off than any other town that has zoning.
So I'm just, like, my house was built during the Civil War. And not much has changed, other than it has a bathroom and water. That's basically it. I have a picture from eighteen sixty three.
It's power, you have electricity.
I do have electricity. They did have an electrical box in nineteen twenty from my basement, what I'm guessing. It just seems like.
We seem to get along fine without this other.
Yeah.
Yeah, but don't worry, the state's gonna shove it down their throats whether we want it or not.
Yeah, but, you know, I wrote.
That really wants me to go out and buy buy some land and make it for wildlife conservation for use to go hunting. If I can't make a driveway any longer than eight hundred feet.
Oh, I'm just gonna bring up, like, I was an employee in Burlington.
Whose idea was that?
They were building that new hive, the new structure they built. That passed within their government, and I think three people went against it. And it took three or four years after they tore down the Square Mall. So it's very interesting. Whereas, again, I think people that live in our community, for the most part, I don't think anyone has any qualms. I think we're neighbors. If someone has a problem with their neighbor, they say, hey, could you please not do that? And I think for the most part, we're pretty respectful of each other. I could be completely wrong. But again, right by the adjacent lot to this firehouse, when I was growing up, was a junkyard. And now it's a business. They took out all the cars. And what's happening on Meadow Street with the two trailers is now going to be a public space. Because unfortunately flooding just keeps hitting it. That's that's the big one.
Well, in that case, they should, they should never have been put there, started because they're in the floodway.
Oh, yeah, of course. Well, it might not have flooded in whenever those houses were built. I don't know. Wasn't born yet.
So I'm very new to this stuff.
Yeah, I am too.
Larry, you know more about Act two fifty thing, but is that like these rules? Is that like the whole town anywhere, everywhere, or only certain areas that this like the driveway thing and that that's going to impact?
So the tier three designation will only affect the parts of town that are are strictly established as a tier three area. The road rule would be for everywhere in town.
That's like, that's statewide, though, that's.
Yes.
How do you reverse that? That's it down. It really is.
Pretty easy, just build and don't tell them.
That drone's gonna fly over to you.
Enough, enough is enough. I mean, Montpelier's got to get the message here, enough is enough. You want, all you hear is we want more housing, we want more housing, and you've got more BS. Which way you want it? Sorry.
Well, I can't speak for the state legislature. I'm just here to convey.
I know, I know. I got his bike.
Well, thank you for the information, really.
I apologize.
We will be hosting information on the website eventually. And we'll notify all the towns so they can provide feedback if they want with the map or if you have any local input you would like to add to it. But that will be available probably November, December.
Early December, yeah, we'll have a draft of of our map, the part that we're responsible for, available for folks to look at. You'll be able to pan and zoom, just like a regular online interactive map. And then you can click into the map and enter comments if you have objections to the way that something was was designated or if you're really excited about the way it was designated, we can, we can hear about that too.
No, I know why. I mean, my, I guess my, I think I'm, I'm new to this as well. Like, just say we do, well, I'm sorry, when they, I'm brain here. Look back at our, what our houses are worth. Someone can.
Reappraisal.
Reappraisal, when someone can say, I disagree with the town on what my houses were.
Oh, like an appeal?
An appeal, so is there an appeals process? Because I will say unfortunately, with government, people could really care less what the general public says. They go in for an agenda that they want. And I'm trying to think historically here, once someone said, the Catholics believed that the sun went around the earth. And one person said, no, we go around the sun, and he got forced into a house for the rest of his life. One person was right and one person was wrong. So how do we, you know, we're here to represent the people of Williamstown. And again, I mother grew up in Montpelier. Other than that, don't really go there very often. It's changed quite a bit since she was born. But how are we supporting our residents? If, you know, someone bought their house thirty years ago and now all of a sudden they have to start following new laws? And I think this is happening, what's happening near Pump and Pantry, correct? Don't we have to put in water?
Oh, the stormwater.
Stormwater things, and they literally said to us, this is the rule now, but wait twenty years and it could cost you another three million dollars?
Well, it was twenty years ago, it was different than when it is now.
Exactly, that's the concern, is it's not making anything necessarily better.
It's always revolving.
It seemed to.
I'm just guessing.
It seemed to apparently approved it twenty years ago.
So this doesn't, this map won't tell you that you have to do something with or to your house? I mean, I understand the three acre rule.
This is, this is all about where you're talking about.
It's all about looking out to the future. So someone asks a question, you know, what can we do to to appeal or stop this? I I doubt there's any stopping the road rule piece. However, there is a public comment period that you could, you could weigh in on. The tier three, that that tier three designation, throughout the rulemaking process, and even after they've delivered a draft of the tier three, I do believe their intention is to have an appeals process for that. So if your parcel or some fragment of your parcel, or if the select board wanted to take it on, you know, looking at the, looking at it townwide, then there there should be a way that you can weigh in on that, once they get closer to issuing the final map.
So if there was a a development in town that's been in the works for several years, the road's already established into that development, the town's already agreed to take it over once that development has been developed. Does that fall under that two thousand foot road rule?
The road's already built?
The road's already built, the town's already agreed to take it over once it's been paved. Is that grandfathered in?
That is a good question, and I'll have to look into that. I I don't know, at least partially because they haven't, they haven't put all the the rulemaking materials out for that. But that's a, that's a great question, and we'll be able to follow up with you in the in the future here.
What he's talking about, one effect, still have to go through that fifty process and that road length would be addressed during that period? One, one thing.
Well, if they've already built the the road, they already have the Act.
Part of it, part of it is, not all of it.
The the cul-de-sac portion of it hasn't been, the road into where the development's going to be.
And is there an Act two fifty permit already associated with that?
It's in process.
It's in process?
One, one thing, unless, correct me if it's changed. The town planning commission, the members on our town planning commission have to work up this town plan every eight years now. It used to be five back when I was on the regional planning commission. Then they have to go through all the public process and stuff, and then they have to present it to the select board for final approval before it's adopted. Is that still the way it works?
If, for for the municipal plan update.
Mismatched update.
Yes, that is correct. So you'll have, you'll have a draft version. I would imagine the select board would say, yeah, we we at least think this looks like a good draft version, ready for the public comment period. The planning commission would hold a public meeting and then move the the final draft of the document to the select board, and the select board would also hold a public meeting. So that that process hasn't changed under these new regulations.
So I guess what my point is, as a select board, we need to pay close attention to what the planning, the planning commission comes up with and then work with them to find, to to Williamstown, like a better word, standards versus what might be in Chittenden County or some other place.
Yeah, and just important to remember that or to note that with the the new town plan that the the planning commission is working on, there will be a few things that, I'm pretty sure your last town plan was in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen. So so there's a few, few elements that are different now than than before, including an energy plan, forest habitat and wildlife connectors map and, what was the reason I brought this? Oh, the future land use map. So again, we're here to talk about the regional future land use map. But in your updated town plan, you'll have a municipal future land use map. Doesn't have to follow the same categories that that we will apply to the to the region as a as a whole. But that is where I think you could make sure that the the Williamstown spirit is actually still captured in terms of what you want to see out of your landscape moving, moving forward.
I know from experience on that too as well, that, like, say we got a wildlife corridor in another town and joins our town, that from the regional standpoint, they want to kind of make sure it all connects, you know, serves, serves through the region. The regional planners thinks of the regional versus the town planners. I know you guys, it's a tall task to try to keep everybody happy. I mean, Williamstown has gone wrong really well without zoning, in my opinion, anyway. I guess pretty much the center of the board. You know, we've got to follow the state rules best again, but you still got to keep in mind that local people, they don't want to be told they can't do this, they may square into their land, you know? So that's, that's a task you got to try to weed through. Come back, if it doesn't work, we'll help you weed through it. See how it works out.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, again, just want to reiterate, we're not here advocating for zoning in Williamstown. We're here to talk about this, this future land use map. If at some point you want to talk about zoning, great, let's do it. If not, that's, that's all fine.
Zoning is good in the right place, but.
Well, it pretty much sounds like they just passed zoning.
What's that?
Pretty much sounds like they just passed zoning.
But my question is.
In a nutshell.
And again, I'm a new select board member, so currently, if someone just builds a house in Williamstown, what is their punishment?
No, you got to get, get hold of Jackie for a floodway per.
Driveway permit, which.
Floodway, driveway.
They need a driveway permit, they're under the flood hazard bylaws.
They have to put in a notice of intent. Once the notice of intent comes in, I have to review it to see if it's in the flood plain. If it's in the flood plain, then they have to do a permit, which goes before the planning commission. In the last, how many years the flood hazard bylaws have been in place, I haven't had one person apply that's been in the flood plain.
Well, no one really wants to build in flood plain, generally, generally. But I'm just saying, I had a relative in Winuski, Vermont. He built two rooms. Someone came to inspect the house, he was not fined, they tore down the rooms. And that was, he was not happy about that, because it was thousands, thousands of dollars. He was willing to pay fines, but they made him. So I, I, again, I think, born and raised in Williamstown.
It's local zoning, though, I would assume.
Yeah, I'm assuming, but people love our town because when they go into another town and they see a red Z on someone's window, they wonder what that red Z means. We don't do that. I mean, again, we're.
They needed to apply for a permit to paint.
Yeah, exactly. Well, again, I, if I didn't say this, I worked in Burlington and there was someone, that one I knew, he wanted to put a vinyl siding on, one of his residents was an apartment owner. And the city refused to have vinyl siding on the building. And if you go on the old north end of building, the old north end, there are a lot of very bright painted buildings. That's what he did. He made the the buildings, his apartments, look the most ridiculous out of all of them. They were like neon green, pink, whatever colors, nothing that looked very normal.
Good looking from Eddie Sol, I know many of those properties right now.
I'm sure he is. Buy more than I'd ever bought.
I do just want to get back to one thing, though, about about just building a place and not, and just waiting to get caught. I would really discourage you from taking that approach because it does jeopardize the town's enrollment in the National Flood Insurance Program. So if a structure were to be built, no one notified about it, and then after some storm comes through and that property was damaged and FEMA comes in and they're like, oh, well, we don't have any record of this, this structure. It it could threaten everyone else's enrollment in the National Flood Insurance Program, so.
And I'm not telling people to do things wrong. I'm just saying, again, I think in our town, you know, middle aged at this point, yes. I think we we get along for the most part and, you know, working with the, sorry, what committee are you on? Wait, back there. Again.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. I think the planning commission, everything, at least, I've only been a select board member for two years. The planning commissioner, people that want to utilize something, they go through the planning commission, they follow the correct path. I don't think, again, they joke that we're the Wild West, but I think we're neighbors. That's the key. Crazy, crazy, I know I'm crazy saying that, but.
A couple of quick questions. So when the, like, the maps finished, the corridors, whatever, will any landowners that are affected by that, will they be notified by you guys? Or or does that fall on us, or how do people know?
That's not really our intent. We would certainly make folks aware that the map is available. But the map, in some ways, will affect every property owner in the central Vermont region and in many ways won't affect you at all because if your, your property falls into the tier two jurisdiction, there's really nothing different now and or it won't be anything different in the future than there is now.
I guess I mean specifically for the tier three. Like, if 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 it, now that they enlarged that and now it's on to my property, and I can't do anything on it, how, like, how are people going to know that if they don't go check the website?
Sure. Well, that certainly brings up an interesting point. I'd be happy to pull together a list of affected property owners for the town at that, at that point. But again, really important, and I apologize and push you back. Tier three doesn't mean you can't do anything.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It means that it might be harder to do the thing that you want.
Right, yeah, I get that. I just, as residents, like, if all of a sudden now, if I do start building something and I don't know I fall in that corridor, like, that's not really their fault if they didn't see the map, like, is is all six hundred and some thousand?
That's a big question for me as well, like, how the state is going to to administer that.
Yeah.
And that'll all come out during the rulemaking process. But what I can say is, it's easy enough for me to take that tier three district map, drop it over parcel boundaries and pull directly from the grand list and identify the list of property owners that are affected by that tier three designation. I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, no, I I just want to make sure, like, if if the state doesn't send people, if we can get it so we could at least let people know, like, hey, you're now in this affected area, tier three, whatever. Yeah, and then my other question, and this is, because any local zoning stuff we did, what you're talking about, Tyler, that would go through us. We'd have to set that up. But my, my question is, we don't have zoning, so we're not eligible for tier one.
Or tier two.
No, we are tier two.
We are tier two.
Yeah. If, and then you can tell we're not a fans of zoning here. If we did adopt zoning, is there, you have to have A, B, C, D, E, F, G in your zoning? Or just they look, yes, this town has zoning, that's all we need? Like, is there certain requirements in that zoning?
There, there is, there are certain density requirements through Home Act, which was Act forty seven from twenty twenty three. The idea of zoning now, they're making it more flexible through the state so that it can increase housing stock in Vermont. But they want to do that more dense, not so small. So it's a, I think, four lots per acre, four units per acre, sorry, is the the Home Act zoning requirement.
Okay, I guess what I'm getting at is not so much like how much, like.
Density. Density.
Density, as it is like, you can't paint your house this color. If you build a room, you gotta come and get a permit. That kind of stuff.
There's different levels of zoning, like Chelsea has the design control, which is between the two bridges on one ten. And then they have, the rest of the the town is has zoning, where you have to get a building permit if you wanna build.
Right.
Or put a deck on or whatever, which is. Not a bad thing.
Yes.
But the design control is for like the historic district. Downtown Chelsea is extremely historical and. And so that they have a stricter version there where, you know, there are still some funky colored houses, you know.
So so what exactly would we need for zoning?
Um, so just to also go back to the the density thing, that's for, say, your village center or that your center area. If you have rural residential areas, then that requirement is is more expansive. It's really flexible depending on what part of your town that you're developing. And then the question about the design standards, that is subjective to many different towns and cities. But what I've found working with small towns is keep it simple and very general. And that's how you do. And you're betting that how you can do what you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you had a place on the state, uh, or neighborhood on the state Historic Register, for example, there might be some. Some guidelines that you need to follow in that location, just like the the Chelsea Design Standards that were discussed before. But really what you're talking about is partitioning the town into different districts and saying, this is our rural residential, our ag and forestry. District, and then here's a a list of all the permitted uses, single family residential, childcare facility, timber extraction and on down the the list. And then here's a list of conditional uses. So the permitted use is essentially a use by right. You can go in, file your permit application. I'm in this zone, I'm gonna build one house on that property, but you get your sign off, as long as it's outside of floodplain and a few other things. Conditional use would then go in front of some hearing board to say, does that actually fit the intent of this? Most of the time, you're probably gonna get to yes, because in a rural municipality, the conditional uses are are quite broad for most locations. And then as you move closer into to town and to your village center, the area designated as your village center, for example, you might have your. Village residential, and then that would specify like four or five units per acre. You've got water here, so you do have that as a benefit that could. Potentially increase density in this location, again, if people wanted to do that. Many of our village. Centers are, you know, located in the floodplain, don't have water, don't have sewer. That makes it harder to look long term at really densifying a location like that.
Okay, so zoning, they're say, is more just having these, almost like a map, saying, here's these different areas. Here's what you can do and or build and can't build, kind of?
For the most part, yes.
So theoretically. Could you set up zoning, make this map, but we, if then we decide what goes and doesn't go in those areas? Or does that have to be specific to the state standards or?
I mean, there are standards to be met, as Nikki mentioned, but you know, whether you wanna regulate, what color to pee outside of somebody's houses or. What the material is or what the facade looks like on a on a building, a new building here on on Meadow Street, that's completely up to you.
Yeah.
It could be more about, in this area, we wanna maintain sort of that large lot appearance, because that's where we've got a bunch of farms and we've got some timber operations and things like that. In this area, we're looking, it's a little bit more proximate to the village center, maybe we allow a little bit more. Dense development there, maybe that's also where you could have some commercial and or mixed use types. So it's it's really more along those lines. If you're drawing boundaries on the map and saying, this is what's allowed here and this is what we might allow here. And in some cases, this is what's not allowed, so we're not gonna allow a smelter in the parcel right next to the elementary school. Would be like the kind of case, like extreme, don't wear a uniform, sorry, poison the town.
Um, and I'm asking this because like, do, would we be able to do zoning and just say, in our thing, just. Keep it still how it is, we can build whatever you want, but we still have our zoning.
The state is bringing us zoning.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to say one thing.
What we, what we do don't matter.
But one thing that's interesting, but again, just reading the news, a few years ago, the state passed a law that said, when you sell a house. You have to say it's whether probably an inch of water has leaked into the basement. And I just read in the news, they, that law is gone. Because they didn't want homeowners, I'm assuming, to get in trouble if they didn't know their house was getting flooded. But I'm just saying, I I think, again, I'm just speaking, I'm here for the people of the town. And I'm not a proponent of zoning, because again, I don't think.
I'm not either.
Let me, let me just say something, though. First off, just to make it very clear, because people watch this on TV, we as a board cannot enact zoning. It has to go before a vote of the people. But we can propose it, put it on a ballot, but the people have ultimate decision. And last time that was done, it was like six hundred and something against it versus. Hundred and twenty four, and I don't think the sentiment's changed a lot since then. One thing we need to do. People need to do, the Planning Commission will be working on the town plan and it'll be putting it out for review by the public and for us. Pay attention to that. But on the other hand, you gotta remember that. These people in the front row here are gonna be reviewing what they come up with to make sure it meshes with our surrounding towns. Grove centers and wildlife quarters and so it's all gonna, all gonna work. Without zoning, if you go over eight hundred feet, I guess the rule is now on a road or their driveway. Or if you do over five, I think it's five, nine, five or nine lots down, it changed, I think it's nine now.
Yep.
And the subdivision, that triggers Actu fifty, but it may have changed with this dude, they gotta clean up the date on that. Once you go to a point where you trigger Actu fifty, you're gonna go through the whole gamut. But they're gonna follow the town plan real close as to what Williamstown wants. If you try to do something that's not in the town plan, you're gonna have awful hard time doing it. So it's it's important for us to pay attention to what they come up with for the revised town plan and it's important for the people in general to pay attention to that, too. And as far as zoning goes, the people decide on that, we have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying I'm a proponent of zoning. My thought process is basically.
If you like your job, just don't even say that word.
Yeah, I know, I know. You know, I like information. I like getting information, you know, so.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Hey, if they wanna fire me.
It's only where you're going, right? Anyway, anybody got any other questions? Anybody from the audience or anything?
I guess this, me, when does the Planning Commission in Williamstown meet? Just out of curiosity for residents to know. I'm assuming it's public.
Second Wednesday of every month.
Okay, so and where do they?
Sixteen.
And where do you meet? Town offices. Again, does the public, I mean, look at our audience here as a Select Board, not many residents come.
It's on the website, it was in the, it's in the town report.
I sure do, again, I'm.
Keep saying, keep saying the Z word, it will be.
They're not down a year.
Is there, is there a new map to be looked at for a top surveyor?
We are working on, are you talking about the regional future land use map? We're we're working on a draft of that now and that'll be ready in late November, early December for review.
They spoke to top survey, you know.
Oh, we're talking about two separate things. So the survey was something that Rich talked about, not specific to the to the town plan. I'm not sure what maps you are planning to to work on, which maps you're planning to have me work on for that. But the regional future land use map, which is what Nikki and I are here to talk about, a draft of that map will be ready in late November, early December.
Yeah, town maps will be working, working on a number of, for instance, wildlife, forest blocks.
Yeah, I'll do that, so.
But that's further down the road right now.
Oh, the trouble is you can't make a change if you get it. Anyway, I think everybody's asked us what questions we can. Appreciate you coming in and I have a lot of respect for your job. I served on Regional Flash Commission for twenty six years, so. I know what you're up against, I know what the town line commission's up against trying to make everything work.
We're doing our best.
I do, thank you.
Thanks all for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is paving quotes for Cogswell Street paving beds. You like the paving effect?
Back in the early spring, when we had to put in for a paving grant. We had plinking mysteries come up and they looked at three different, actually four different. Paving projects that we booked all together and submitted for a paving grant. Cogswell Street was one. Robar Road was the other one. Those two were for milling two inches of asphalt and repaving two inches of asphalt. And then Grantville Road was a continuation from Adams Road to Cogswell, Robar, with the one inch overlay, which was what was supposed to be done. About a couple of years ago. And then we had. Just for because Adam gave us a price on paving Adams Road. Because people had been complaining about how they said back years ago it was gonna get repaved, tore up and paved and so. We put all that numbers together and submitted to the paving grant. We hadn't heard, hadn't heard, hadn't heard anything from the state on paving grants and neither any other town. So I, I had also talked to S D Paving, which is J A McDonald, and I had him come up and he gave us. A quote on those same roads, other than Adams Road. Adams Road in its own self was two hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars to pave. From Grantville Road to Martin Terriel Hill intersection. So I did have S D Paving give us a price on that, because I think everybody was in agreement that that wasn't gonna get paved. In the near future anyways.
Because that used to end before the.
Yeah, that used to before the.
Like kinda halfway down?
Yep.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna do it, it only made sense to go actually to the Valpro substation.
Yeah. To lock for that little bit.
So S D Paving also gave us a price to do those same. Milling on Grant, on Cogswell Street, Robar Road, and then overlay on Grantville Road. And they all came back with, I mean, S D Paving was five thousand dollars cheaper than Pike's. And all of them, combination of all of them together. But they can't do it this year. They couldn't do any of it this year, because I said, well, what if we pick one road because we haven't got a paving grant? And we do have enough in our payment reserve fund to do one of the three roads. So I asked S D Paving if they could just quote us to do Robar Road or Cogswell Street. Cogswell Street being the one that I prefer to do. It's the worst shape, and he said there's no way they could do it this year. Pike's, on the other hand, requoted me on Cogswell. They were originally a hundred and ten thousand. And they've since dropped their price to a hundred and eight five, which is a little bit of a savings. And that would be to mill two inches from. Robar, Grantville Road intersection to the town line on Cogswell Street and repaint two inches of of asphalt there. There's five structures, source structures out that road that would need to be. Repaired, three of them need to be repaired, the other two will have to be checked. And make sure that the tops and everything are all good. There's a culvert that has to be replaced. Downstream from the Robar Road culvert that we replaced last year with, under the hydrology study with the state, with FEMA. That culvert was upsized to a thirty inch culvert on Robar. That stream only goes two hundred yards and crosses Cogswell. And that culvert is only an eighteen inch culvert, so that has to be upsized also. We could get all this work done this fall, Pike's, Pike's could do it this fall. And that's the road that I suggest is the cheapest of the of the three to get done. And we actually could swing that in time and money.
One question for you. Before they had these milling machines on stuff, they used to shim and pave a lot. I mean, how about, you know, you take off two inches of blacktop. And you put two inches back on, you still got four inches or whatever it is, but I would think it would be better off to shim it and pave it, you have that much more blacktop on there that should last longer. Take weight better.
In some circumstances, that actually does work better. On Cogswell Street, if we did that, we're gonna be bringing up. The center of the road, you know, two inches, we're gonna have to deal with all the driveways out through there. There's a lot of blacktop driveways out there. And your road's gonna be two inches higher than, after you shim it and pave it, be two inches higher than they are now. You know, you're gonna have to deal with aprons and plus. Around those structures is where the blacktop is really taking it rough, because there, either the tops are, you know, the bricks are giving up. And the tops are twisting and so.
But you're gonna have to do those anyway.
Well, yeah, we gotta straighten them up.
Either way you did it, you'd have to.
But if they grind two inches of that down, that'll get rid of that, that. Well, yeah, I guess if you gotta tear it up to fix it anyway, it's gonna get rid of it.
I mean, I mean, just to me. Most structurally soundier with the thicker the paving. Take off two inches, you lost two inches, you put back two inches, I think it would be better to add it to. As far as two inches on the driveways, I can't see that's a big thing. I mean, it does when you pave the road four or five inches, they. Comes to make issue.
Oh, I'd add to that. As far as adding two inches to the driveways, no, they just, they could. They take a compact miller on the front of their skid steer, shave those down in front of every paved driveway like they do on most roads. Overlay it, which the shim will fill in most of the craters and holes that are in the road. You guys can raise the basins or the sewer. Replace the top bricks that need to be done and they can just top it instead of milling it down. It'll save a whole lot of money and time.
Yeah, but some of them craters have to, they're six, eight inches.
I I know. That's why you shim it over, fill them in first and then you put your top in, instead of just milling it down, because you're only taking two inches off the top of the milling.
So you won't get that, like, go back over.
I bet you, I bet you it'd be quite a bit cheaper.
Yep.
Yeah.
Like you get a hold of Tiffany and see if she can go back over the price instead of milling it.
Yeah, like her manholes, you gotta cut like a four foot square.
Right.
And shim them up to whatever you go to end up with.
Tiffany gasks.
So if we do that, can we get a not to exceed from you so we can move forward with it, so we can start doing all of our stuff? Because other than that, we're gonna have to wait until October and.
And the problem is, is I need to get things lined up for that culvert. I have to order that galvanized culvert and.
Should be getting that in quick as you can, because that's, that's. Make sure it's well compacted.
Right.
If you're gonna pave it right off the first year. Almost wondering if it wouldn't be best to put that culvert in. Just have them go through, do the shimming this year and then pave it next year, but that, if you're gonna put a big culvert in. Might be, end up being a better job. The shimmin will take the roughness out of it. And pave it in the spring, but I mean. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but.
But you go over there and shim it this year and then the top, as long as it's at the same price, but who cares? The shim's gonna be smoother than the road is now. And then come in in the spring after, make settlement, you pave it, put the top on it. That that makes sense.
Be willing to do that this year.
That way there's a settlement and that culvert will take care of it.
It's gonna settle.
I like that idea better.
But can we still get the not to exceed?
What's that?
Can we still get a not to exceed price?
I just have a question, too.
I just have a question too, I'm sorry. So with some things, there are always like the bids come in sealed envelopes and then, so, how does this work? Did they go out to bid and just randomly any paving company or?
No, so what happened was when I was applying for the paving grant, I had Pike's give me a price on all the roads. So I had a set amount to send in with my documentation for the, for the paving grant. Because the paving grant, the state didn't approve any paving grants for anybody. We had to go out and get at least one more price. They didn't, they didn't know what Pike's had, was, they went out and looked at all, looked at the roads except for Adams Road themselves and gave us specific price, they weren't sealed bids, but they were separate bids and nobody knew what the other ones had bid on.
So I guess my rule, or my question is, when do we do sealed bids versus non-sealed bids?
Well, I mean, it depends, I mean, I'm.
I'm, I'm, like, sometimes, like, is it federal dollars or is it tax, I mean?
No, it's, it's, it's case by case if you're doing it sealed, I mean, if it's under ten thousand dollars, but specific. Normally, we've always gone with Pike when we've been applying for a paving grant because they've been available, they've been able to do it. So we haven't necessarily put it out to a specific, uh, to more than one paving company.
But we don't have that, that money, right? So don't we have to put it out for a bid?
No, well, we did, we put it, we got it, we got a second, a second bid on it, so we have two, two separate bids for.
We had to have a figure to plug in for the paving grant.
When I do that, when I do my paving grant, you have, you have to put in a specific amount. This is what the estimate of it's gonna be and then that bases what they're gonna give you the money for it. Not knowing that they weren't gonna give anybody a paving grant, you know, they told you you had to have your paving grant in by the end of February. So, I mean, that's standard, but.
What's with the law is that we weren't getting a paving grant and we didn't have the money to do all of these roads. Then we went back and got, I went and got another paving price from our paving company. Just to make sure that Pike's was treating us honestly, basically. And we would've had two bids to look at, not sealed, but bids. But then when S D said they couldn't do it this year, that kind of eliminated them completely, so then it left me with one, one price. And what I called Pike's to tell them we weren't gonna be able to do all of them, that I was gonna try to pick one road of the three. She repriced it for that one road.
I mean, FEMA requires you to, I mean, unless it's emergency.
Yeah.
FEMA requires you to get bids.
I just wanna make sure we're doing it correctly, and again, new to this, even though it's almost end of year two for me. Because again, some things are thrown at, like they're, they come to us in a sealed envelope and this is certainly over, what is it, ten thousand dollars? Seems significantly more than ten thousand dollars and that road, from my understanding, is not very long. How much, half a mile, and at what price are they?
It's a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
So we're looking at fifty thousand dollars per quarter mile.
Yeah, well, we spent.
That seems like a pretty big price.
It was a half a million dollars for Falls Bridge Road. And we milled that up and let it sit, yeah, reclaimed it for a year.
Yeah, Falls Bridge is a little longer than that though.
So, but on top of that, we reclaimed it and let it sit for a year, which was another additional thirty thousand dollars. And then the engineering was another additional fifty thousand dollars, so it was well over a half a million dollars.
And I guess.
Six hundred thousand.
My, I guess I might ask a question, how many paving companies are there legitimately in central Vermont that could do this work?
Well, RG didn't have time to give us one because they were asked.
He won't do the, the road, that road anyways. He doesn't have a compactor, a vibrator roller, a compactor heavy enough to combat.
The question on that answer would be, S D Paving's big enough to do it, Pike Industries' big enough. F W Wickham up in, they are well, big enough to do it, most of us subbed out. And Jay Hutchins, which is now owned by.
Allstate.
Allstate, which they merged, they bought that last month. Um, they are big enough, but availability, no.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're doing it the correct way in the sense of.
And the problem is, we patched up there and patched and patched and patched and there's no more patching up there.
And this is, this is going up Grantville.
And taking a left.
It's, it's, so when it's wide, you go to the left all the way to.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
From the intersection?
Yeah, from the intersection.
Town line?
Yeah.
Cause Robar's been patched pretty good for a while.
Well, we've done that twice with the, with FEMA.
ROB, RG did a patch up on that last year, two years ago. Way better than Cogswell Street.
Cogswell is the worst of them three roads.
Yeah. There's four people on that road too.
Yeah.
Perry, Perry Road is getting almost as bad, there's a lot, lot of truck traffic on Perry Road. So it's taking it pretty hard, but that's gonna be a total different logging.
So Jackie's looking for not to exceed, and we know, we're assuming that not milling and just shimming would definitely not exceed.
A hundred and eight.
That.
What did you, uh, we all have text messages, stuff like that, get some numbers together, run it back by us, we know the general idea, what you wanna do, but we can figure it out between us. That way, I mean, it's a consensus of us that we think it's good, we can say so at that time, or we have to come in, come in, do a special check, but I mean, uh, to me, I don't think it's a good idea to, if you're gonna replace culverts and stuff, just to do that right now, the manhole shimming will have to wait till just before you pave because you can't be catching them with the stone claws and stuff like that, so.
So you wanna do the, do the culvert?
Unless you think you can get that culvert in real good, so probably ain't gonna be that bad, but.
The one thing, well, I had Pike do one on Robar Road. And that was done late fall last year and really didn't, I mean, he runs his roller late fall, he's on it and vibratory roller. It, it's gonna settle some, there's no doubt about it, it's just, that's the nature of the beast. But whether it will.
Just cut it wide enough, so, I mean, like, at least ten feet each side of it, so.
Right.
It doesn't matter.
But I'm not opposed to getting Tiffany to give me a price on shim it this year and then possibly paving it next year. And I'm sure if she will do that, it's gonna be cheaper, there's no doubt about it. And we'll do the manholes this year and shim it to the manholes so that it's not, you know, nothing to fly over. It's destroying the flooddrugs right now, it's just destroying them. And people's cars, what, pump pantries accessing your truck.
Well, I think I'm wary of is, we're middle of September almost now. Everything shuts down in the middle of November, but we got two months, we gotta get those manholes chimed up, if you're gonna have a pavement this year, you gotta get that culvert in and and I don't like, I'm seeing paving in November and the snows flying, you just don't get a good job, but, I don't know. I'd rather, rather do the shimming and the culvert this year, get that paved over than.
I have no problem, I'll obviously, I can do it, I'll get, get the numbers together and I'll have Jackie send them out to you guys and you can look at them and tell me what you want, I don't wanna wait until next, I don't wanna wait till October, I won't have time to do the culvert and manholes and everything. And I don't want pushing Pike's.
Is this gonna be the town crew doing the culvert replacement and stuff like that, or the manhole, you're gonna be that?
Manholes, we will do, the culvert, I don't mind.
It's gonna be subbed out.
Yeah, the culvert will be subbed out, that'll go under a road rehab fund. The manholes, we will do.
Town's gonna do the manholes?
Yeah. Cause I got two young guys that have done them before, so they don't have no problem doing them.
Well, it's a good time.
Yeah, we do have two new employees now.
Excellent.
So we're up one from.
Okay, I mean, I don't care, it don't make me nervous to speak, but it's just first time they've ever done it, I know.
Uh, Jim, Jim.
You're not gonna be shimming any manholes this year anyway, if you go the shim and pave route. You go the shim and pave, it'll be not gonna be adjusting any manholes this year.
Well, we gotta repair the ones that.
All repair something.
We gotta repair three of them.
Right.
The other two would just be shimming around them.
If they do it right now, all you can do is put a grade rig on it, and it could pave it.
There's three of them that are, you can see the tops, they're starting to kitty concrete, blacktop. So I'm sure the bricks are just sitting, just separating around them. So the, the, the structures and salads are concrete structures, they're just brick tops. So it's not like they're the old style brick all the way up through. Alan's, I'm sure you guys knows all about them because it is our sewer line out there.
You can get the concrete grade rig, you still have to.
Yeah, you're gonna say you get concrete raver and eliminate the bricks altogether, way better.
Them concrete ravers are a lot stronger than the bricks.
Best way to do it.
I don't know, so it's a consensus, boy, I'd rather see you go and shim, pave, shim, shimming this year to get the culvert and stuff in and pave it next year, or?
That sounds better to me because what's the point of?
I ain't gonna be good enough to get it all done and get it paved in decent weather.
I mean, you, you, you know a lot about it, I'll take Dave's word if you guys think that, and it makes sense, right? If you replace a culvert and pave over and then it settles again.
Yeah.
Well, you're gonna pave over, but I mean, the, the initial top coat will be done next spring.
Right, oh, okay, so it would be just like a basic.
Shim, yeah.
It's, it's, it's still gonna be wasteful than it is now.
Yeah.
The only thing, I mean, the shimming's gonna just level up the road filled potholes and get its own, when it's ready to be paved, it's, it's moving.
If we were, if we were July or August, first August, I'd say probably be fine, but take it later in the fall, but just up against it right now.
Yeah, and then maybe by next year, they'll be giving grants again.
Not, I don't know.
It's a possibility.
Get three or four or two and then you're gonna, you're just gonna get pushed back, there'll be a lot of snow.
So what, what do we look for, just approval to go on with that aspect of the job?
So if we give a permission to go ahead and get the numbers for that, just be with it, does that, does that work for you? Does that? Guys, get to that.
Do you still need a not exceed or just?
No, we're just gonna do that, I'm gonna email you and let you know what the price is.
Okay.
That must schedule our culvert changed anyways because it needs to be done. If we get a heavy rainstorm, it's gonna flow through that thirty-inch culvert on Robar Beautiful and then when it gets down to that one, it's gonna just go over the road.
Yeah.
So it needs to be changed anyways, so I'm gonna get that scheduled to get it done regardless if we pave and shim it or not.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're just doing shim it, all the companies can do that, don't need that big pay.
Make all your residents happy too.
Not at all.
Way, way more than it is now.
Do we need a motion or?
So I'm, I'm just trying to think of a way to say it, a motion to replace the culvert and shim Cogswell Street.
The shim, Cogswell Street, yeah.
And repair the manhole covers.
Repair the manhole covers.
Well, we've got to repair some.
Now where it needs to be. I second what you just said.
Well, I'll get a price and see if they, Pike's can even do that this fall. And Jackie can let you guys know what the cost difference is between milling it, paving it and shimming it, paving it, it's gonna be.
Like, like I said, the shimming can be done by a smaller company, so it doesn't have to be Pike's.
Roger to shim it if he had time, I, I don't think he does, but.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded, any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, on to old business. They're not here tonight, but we've had people in here the last few weeks complaining about the creating jobs on the roads and the berms left on the edge of the roads. And that may be so in some cases, I didn't look at the others, but Clayton and I both looked at the road that was paved since then, which was South Hill Road. And that was the only road because they've been dealing with roadside mowing and drainage ditch, drainage work on other roads during this last month. What I found on South Hill Road was a real good job, the road had a crown in it, there wasn't no edges left on the edge of the road. Stopped the water from going to the ditches and overall it was a really good job and it wasn't dusty. At that, when I looked at it anyway. So the chloride's been being, was being, you can see where the chloride been put down and stuff. And I think that roller that you guys used now is helping quite a bit. And I have found no, no reason for anybody to have any complaints for that and, uh, but I'm going further on this. We lost one grader operator recently and another one's gonna be retired at the end of the year. And we got one that, we got two of them that are in training now to replace them, so hopefully it all works out, but bear with us.
If they're a little passionate.
If it's not perfect, it may not, they, they, they gotta learn somehow and just, good grader operators are very hard to come by, so it takes time to get that way, so. The town will be doing the best they can and, uh, as far as I'm concerned, it was a well, job well done on, uh, South Hill Road.
And that actually was graded.
Like Clayton speaks for himself, he looked at it too.
That road was graded by two different people, Jimmy graded it to Joe's house and then Justin, the new guy, graded it from there to the town line and he really is coming along very well. He's, he's gonna be a good grader operator, just a little more seat time.
Before Graham Rowan took the town line, it doesn't have the material that it has from here down, so I could tell, you could tell where it stopped, you know, they, they did the best they could and what they had to work, but you just can't hog in there, you're gonna have rocks like this pulling up.
Yeah, they just don't, not, not, it's granted all the way to Williams House. And from Williams Out is not granted.
Uh, I was trying to jump to head of it earlier, but yes, I drove up through there, I contained all the way it passed through. Lightning House Road, that's one seat paddock, that's the right, right name for that. I went up to the Eagle Club anyways and turned around just cause, but that looks a hundred percent better than the berms are, they're, they're nonexistent. And it was a good job and it's about time, I guess, so. Keep up the good work.
We're trying.
Bye.
Was any roads in way up town gravel road resurfaced this year? Actually, is the whole road resurfaced?
No, not, no whole roads, all that got, the road resurfacing in the five-year plan this year got changed from road resurfacing to drainage.
Oh, again, I mentioned this last week, but how are we ever gonna catch these roads up? Keep kicking the can down the road.
But you can't?
And the other thing is, yeah, they did a pretty good job grading South Hill. Take the drive up there when it's raining and see where the waters are. You can really tell how, you know, there's a I mean, it got smoothed out pretty good, but if you go up there when it's raining, the water's running down the road.
For the most part, there may be some areas, but for the most part, what I see, it had a, not a huge crown in it, but it had a pretty good crown in it, so water shouldn't be running down the middle of it. But I'll, I'll take you up on that, I'll take you right up there when it's raining, I've seen rain, it's safe.
It looks, it looks brown when it's graded, but people drive up the road, there's one set of wheels and they'll, they drive down the road, there's one set of wheels and they'll, that gets packed up with everything happening, so.
I think that, uh, that rollers helped some with that. You know, I've degraded with a new roller apparatus, I think that helps some, but.
That helps some.
Had applied calcium chloride to it, same process, that's saving it some.
We've up, we've upped the use of calcium chloride this year. Also, not just because of the. Not just because of the drive, but because we. With the roller, we're rolling it slower. And so it's actually putting down more calcium per square mile. And the fact that it's been so dry, we've had to put more down anyways.
Well, it's money well spent, cause every time you see dust, it's just surface gravel going off near. Without that, fines could bind his stones together, then you end up with stones all the time. Hell, hills especially. So I'm, I'm a big fan of the calcium chloride, put it on there, not overdo it, but I mean, don't skip on it. Any else have any comments? Okay, uh. Go to round the table. Scott?
Uh, great job on the festival this weekend, I don't know if anybody went down there. Man, was that place packed. Great job.
Did the fire, was the fire part made of the ducts water in the roof of the ducts?
I believe so, I was not here Saturday, but I.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, because the water level behind my house went up for, for about twenty minutes.
You have anything?
No, that was good, that was good.
All right. Okay, I don't have anything. So, um, you're gonna, uh, take a recess or a recession? Need a motion to that?
Take one. Seconded.
Just being seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone for coming. Take the old ground. Good luck on the town plan, man.
Okay.
We're out of executive session. I make a motion for Jackie to continue the turnaround easement on Weir Road.
Negotiations?
Negotiation.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Let's get that.
I make the motion re-adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
That's a good motion. I'll take that one.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?